For the purpose of considering and taking action on the following resolution which was[8.02][8.02]introduced at a meeting of the common council of the city of Hudson on the sixth day of August 2007. City of Hudson Resolution Number 17-07, be it resolved pursuant to Section 66, 1034, Wisconsin Stats, since the public interest requires that the following portion of Barstow Street in the city of Hudson, Wisconsin be and the same as hereby vacated and discontinued. All that part of Barstow Street lying southwest of the south line of the Union Pacific Railroad and west of the Eighth Street right away. A map showing is available. Be it further resolved upon such discontinuance and vacation. Title to the parcel so vacated shall be best in the owners of lot to which they originally belong to Terry and Linda Walker, north eighty feet of Lot 2, Block G, Otis Hoyt's addition and the north eighty feet of the south, two hundred and sixty-four feet of the east, thirty-eight feet of Outlet 58, City of Hudson. Is there anybody here that would like to speak to this subject? Anyone in the audience?
I would just like to inform the people that have petitioned for this that there's a few hundred dollars that the city has incurred for all she costs that would be passing on for them.
Okay. Anyone? If not...
Move to close the hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion's carried. We've got a few minutes before we start the regular meeting. And would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and equal and just for all.
The clerk take the roll please.
District Juan Marsette.
Here.
District Two O'Connell.
Here.
District Three Radamacher.
Here.
District Four Wyland.
Here.
District Five O'Malley.
Here.
District Six Burchell.
Here.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present on any subject not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the council? Oh, hi. Come on up.
Yes, I have some rest time.
You want a drum roll or...
No, no, thank you. I've suspended a little bit from my exercise running here. Anyway, hello, my name is Kim Heineman and I'm with the Chamber of Commerce and I'm here to obviously invite you all and our viewing audience to our Autumn Taste Walk which is coming up on September 29th. We're really excited about that. It's our seventh annual event. So, September 29th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's designed as a fun family fall festival downtown Hudson. A lot of our shops and restaurants are featured. We have many booths on Locust Street. We have trolley rides that are free, the famed Hudson Star Observer Pie Contest, and we also have a new event which is a grilling contest, so it's called Get Your Grill On. So, we have some fun new things to offer as well as music and entertainment. So, please come and bring your families. The other things that are coming up in September, our Leadership Hudson Program kicks off for its third year tomorrow. So, we'll have our retreat all day tomorrow out at Camp St. Croix. We also have our Business Spotlight which is our after-hours networking event on Wednesday this week which is September 19th from 5:30 till 7:30. And this particular event's at the Kilkarny Hills Golf Club. So, they've offered some really fun golf specials for our members as well. Let's see, what else do we have? You should have all received an invitation to the East Metro Regional Business Conference which is coming up on Thursday, the 20th, from 11:15 until 1:00. And the topic there, we'll be talking about the Republican National Convention that's coming in to St. Paul next fall around Labor Day. And the reason that that is significant to us is that there'll be 50,000 people in the area or more, considering the press and all. And so, this is being looked at as a really big tourism opportunity for us and other communities in the area. So, we'll be talking about that at the conference, so I encourage you to come. They've included Hudson last year for the first time in the East Metro since we all impact each other certainly, and they've extended their reach a little bit farther this year to River Falls and New Richmond as well. So, let's see, the only other thing I wanted to mention of note is our Good Morning Hudson Program which is coming up October 9th from 11:30 till 1:00 at the FIP Center for the Arts. And the topic there will be economic and long-range impact of locally-owned independent business on sustaining a vibrant and prominent community. So, it's a long title, but I think it'll be very, very informative for all of us. So, that's it for the chamber's update. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go to the consent agenda items. And would you verbalize those for us?
To approve the regular minutes of September 4th, 2007, and the special meeting minutes and closed session minutes of September 11th, 2007. To approve the final development plans for the T-Mobile antenna and equipment to be installed at the Carmichael Water Tower, 1,000 Carmichael Road. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $450,316.35 with a detailed listing available in the clerk's office upon request. To approve the issuance of regular operators licenses for the period of 9/18/2007 through June 30th, 2009 to William Mitchell and Benjamin Runquest. And the issuance of temporary operators licenses to be used October 12th, 2007 at the CCH Foundation Wine Fest to Beth Ann Richter and Danny Goodyear. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license to CCH Foundation to sell wine on October 12th, 2007 at the Christian Community Campus Foundation Wine Fest Event at 1320 Wisconsin Street. To approve closing Second Street in the afternoon of Friday, October 5th, 2007 for the Hudson High School Homecoming Parade. To approve and authorize Mayor Bro to execute the video programming use agreement with the town of Hudson for a period of two years pursuant to the terms and requirements as indicated in the agreement. And to place on file the quarterly reports of Public Works, the wastewater treatment plant, and the St. Croix EMS chief, the Public Utility Commission minutes of 9:50-7, St. Croix EMS Commission minutes of 9:10-7, and the Zoning and Building Board of Appeals minutes of June 26th, 2007. That is all.
What is your pleasure on the consent?
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Marsette.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Wyland.
Yes.
Burchell.
Yes.
Radamacher.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Let's go. The report is standing committees, planned commission amendment to conditional use permit for Red Cedar Canyon Plan Residential Development to permit 88 senior housing units to replace 24 townhome units north of Hanley Road and east of O'Neill Road. Hans Hagan Homes, DMW Properties Incorporated. Denny?
This project again is located on the north side of Hanley Road and immediately west of the 40-unit condominium building that a couple of weeks ago the common council approved for renovation to the 55-unit senior housing project. There's been some confusion on the two projects, so I just want to try to make a point of clarification before proceeding further. Committee recommends approval of the request by Hans Hagan Homes and DMW Properties for amendment to the conditional use permit for Red Cedar Canyon Plan Residential Development to permit the replacement of 24 townhome units of 88 assisted senior housing units generally located north of Hanley Road and east of O'Neill Road with the condition DMW would review the issue of payment of ambulance calls to the facility with the city attorney and provide information to the city in regard to specific type of service provisions per Wisconsin statutes because assisted housing and don't have a facilities here certified or licensed. So, Ms. Colleen Wallen from DMW is here tonight to answer any questions on this particular proposal.
May I ask a question of Colleen, please? Hi, Colleen, I'm Scott O'Malley.
Hi, I'm Wallen.
Nice to meet you. I did not get, obtain a copy of the planned commission minutes this session in my packet, so I have to ask you the question about size of living units here because this was, this is almost a four-acre site on which originally 24 townhomes were planned. And now, we're looking at 88 living units. And in your paperwork which you provided to us, you do mention, you use the word "large"
Yes.
More than once. Large one- and two-bedroom apartment homes, large foyer areas, large balconies, patios. What, can we quantify large because we're talking 88 units instead of 24 in the same space? Can you tell us what the square footage would be like in a typical unit?
The one-bedroom units are 800 square feet and the two-bedroom units can go anywhere from 1,200 to, I believe there's two-bedroom plus dens that are 1,400 square feet. When we say large in the assisted living or congregate housing comparatively in the marketplace, the average size is around 600 square feet. And so, comparing that living space, not comparing it to townhomes, that's a relatively large assisted living unit.
You'll have, I assume, 88 filled units here with people using the amenities in the neighborhood.
Yes.
Have you made provision for the association fees that would have been taken care of by these 24 townhome units?
We're currently, I don't have the authority to do that on my own, but we're talking with Hans Hagen and the association about how exactly we'll pay the fees for our use of that space.
So, since you're in discussions, you would have no trouble with a motion tonight that would make that conditional approval?
Absolutely.
Conditional, excuse me, conditional upon that agreement being worked out.
Yes, that would be fine.
Thank you, Colleen. I have no more questions.
Any other questions, Colleen?
Danny, I think this question's for you and your staff recommendation and your concern about the density proposed. Could you clarify that?
Well, when this first proposal first came in, I expressed concern on provision of Hans Hagan Homes had had an amendment of the conditional use permit previously, and we shifted some density to townhomes in the neighborhood a little bit further to the north. As I've expressed in the very beginning, I'm not opposed to senior housing. I was opposed where this 88 units in this particular area was too dense or not. Now, that's where my concern came from.
And you still have that concern?
I've been extremely supportive of senior housing and the fact that our population's becoming older, senior housing. I don't have as strong a concern. You know, I think my position would be is you're leaving it as the 12 units or go ahead and approve the senior housing one, and I don't think there's any in between, so, at least in my opinion.
I had one other question along the same lines as Scott's, and that is, 88 homes are going to fill, fit in exactly the same height and width as the original 24 homes?
No, this would be a three-story building. The townhomes would have been one- or two-story buildings.
Is the only issue with the neighborhood was the association dues or were there other issues?
Well, association dues were the primary issue. There is some maintenance issues that we squared away with Hans Hagan Homes, but that's been taken care of. The association dues were the biggest concern.
Has there been any agreement yet on provision for payment of ambulance calls?
That issue hasn't been discussed yet. So, you know, still Catherine, I need to sit down.
The art of the possible.
Okay.
Need a motion.
I'd just like to make some comments.
Sure, come on up.
I'm Mike O'Connell. I am a resident of the Hans Hagan Townhomes and also a member of the Board of Directors of the Townhome Association because we are past 75 percent capacity. We have our own entity. The other homes that are still there are still under control of Hans Hagan because they're not, they're not, don't have enough numbers yet. Now, I'm sure you've all heard this before, but going down my notes, several years ago when this council or the other members approved this Hans Hagan development, there was like 500-plus units that were living places that was going to be there when it was all finished. So, for simplicity, let's say it was 524. Townhomes, estate homes, executive homes, and row homes. And all of these are governed by declarations that are very, very hard to change. They're changeable, but that's what rules each association and the overall association. So, now, when they got ready to sell the places, myself and everybody else at this bottom, we go to the sales office, they give you their sales pitch, and then they talk about association, association dues, and what they are, and you'll be sharing the cost of the entrance ways. It's not only the walk-in paths and the tennis courts or the soccer fields, it's the entrance way, the lighting, some of the tree trimming of the common areas, getting with the buckthorn in the canyon, all these kind of things are part of the overall association cost. That would be shared by 524 homes when everybody's done, Hans Hagan's gone away. Now, your only choices at that point as a buyer is two choices. You buy and agree to these, or you don't agree, you buy with the stipulation these dues are there. Or you say no and go to River Falls and buy or something. So, now, with these 24 townhomes in exchange for 88 units, these, unless it's written and changed in the language, those 24 home dues are going to go away. And that cost for all that other stuff will be divided by whatever is left. So, our contention is, and I represent from our board, that if they remained as townhomes, when the buyers come in there to buy them, it would be the same way. They pay their dues and sign up, and when we're all done, we'd have 524. So, we would, we as a group are not really opposed to senior citizen neither, but we want to make sure at this time, because down the road, yeah, we'll talk to you, doesn't hold a lot of water. We would like language in there right now that yes, they will pay the dues equivalent to 24 units. If they have 88, and you know, this is their business, however they collect it, but divide 24, the cost of each one paying 24 by 88, it wouldn't be very much per unit. So...
Mike, what are those dues?
They're $290 a year, paid quarterly.
Per unit?
Not quarterly, semi-annually.
Okay.
It's 145 every six months.
Times 24.
Times, times...
On the original plan.
Yeah, right.
And now, that would be divided by 88.
Well...
Or something.
Yeah, we're not asking for, we're not trying to be, you know, haggish or whatever. We're asking for the equivalent of 24, but that's perpetual.
What's the ratio of the people that are paying to the people that are not paying in your...
Everybody pays.
Okay.
Every single unit pays.
But you said before there was an option...
And we didn't have the option when we buy, we didn't have the option of saying, well, I'm old, I'm not going to use it, or I'm going to check it out and come back in a year, and if I like it, I'll sign up. It's either there or it isn't there.
Okay, gotcha.
Either they pay or they're going to lean out on us.
And...
Have you looked at, or was it too early to look at screening from this building to the other homes in the area?
The development plans will have to come back to the city and address those issues at that time if it is approved tonight.
Are you worried about, imagine if declarations like parking, overnight parking and something like that?
No, we're not.
Don't have those with your homes right now?
We're, it's removed per se, right where the townhomes are.
Okay.
And the single-family homes, they all have their own parking. They, there's that third driveway, it's been expressed that this assisted living home or senior home will use the east driveway. Well, the east driveway is used by our residents also. You know, it's not a private driveway.
Council, would it be best to pursue this now or in the developer's agreement?
Well, I think you'd want to have, I mean, if you're going to put a contingency on there, you want to do it, they're remanding their permit, correct? You'd want to make it a condition of the permit, the approval now.
Okay.
I mean, you could postpone it and have them come forward with whatever agreement, you know, not make a decision and see what they come up with.
So, maybe it would be ready by the time the developer agreement comes forth or what?
Well, I don't know that, there'll just be an approval of the final development plans. There won't be another developer's agreement.
Well, when I say "we," we are the overall association and we, the townhome owners, are one part of that. We, there again, the Townhome Association has our own Board of Directors because we're at 80 percent full. The other ones are still under the control of Hans Hagan. So, and we are part of that same group that is not 75 percent. So, it's managed, controlled by Hans Hagan. So, in his sales agreement, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, legal person, but we understand among our members, me representing them, that we are opposed to this request if that language isn't there, and we're in favor of it if the language is there.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Colleen, Mr. O'Connell, can I ask a quick question, Colleen?
Sure.
Do you have any pleadings on this? Do you want to tell us if this would work, any hardship on your organization if we were to postpone?
That would be a hardship because this has been, this has been going on for quite some time trying to get this approval because of just other, other issues with the Hans Hagen situation that didn't have anything to do with my organization. I have no issue paying the fees. I'm not, I have been privileged to seeing any documentation about what they pay for in the fees. Is their yard work included? What would be, what would still be on our price and what, what we, is in the fee? I mean, I'm not in a position right now to discuss negotiating the cost because I'm not, I don't, I haven't seen any documentation. I was told that this is something that I can't dictate.
I'm sorry, I think I worded my question inappropriately or incorrectly. What I meant was, will you lose financing? Will it be construction setbacks? You're saying yes, you will lose your financing?
Not financing, but we're getting into a season. If I, if I can't get an approval and get these plans completed, we're obviously looking at, you know, losing any time this year in building projects.
But you understand that it seems quite likely, given the nature of the questions you've heard, that if anything were to be approved this evening anyway, it would have a lot of contingencies on it. So, you would still have issues to deal with either way.
Which I believe can be solved. We've been more than willing to negotiate this issue on paying the fees.
Along with this one, if it's passed.
$7,200, I think, for the year.
And again, I don't know what they're paying for in their, in those fees, what's included with that. It can be a different thing for an individual unit as opposed to a multifamily property. We're probably, we might not be getting the same level of services, or they may be agreeing to a level of service that they don't want to provide to our property too without looking at the documents.
Colleen, if we were to postpone action on this, is your proposal to build this building going to go away?
I don't think so. I mean, we're very interested and we've done a lot of work on the project, so we're very interested in getting it done. I just, I don't see this as, if it's a contingency of this conditional use permit, we certainly understand that we would need to solve this issue in order to get this done.
Can we make it a contingency that they pay this much a year? Or is that outside of our...
I'd like to make the motion if I may.
Like Colleen said, we don't know what that figure is exactly.
Well, we know it's 69-60.
Yeah.
Well, we don't know what they have access to in terms of the common space.
Right. If we were to give them approval tonight, it's got so many contingencies on it that they really have a hatful of air anyway, really. I'm going to move that we postpone until we get the ducks in a row here. And as you say, this is not going to kill your deal, so I think that you can proceed exactly as you have been, but you have to recognize that there are certain details that need to be worked out. And please come back to us at your earliest opportunity and we'll be able to take this up again.
With all due respect to the, to the council, I cannot negotiate this issue. That has been my problem is I don't have any authority over the, over this group which has been brought up on a number of occasions. We talked about that in the planning commission meetings. I, they would need to probably tell me what it's going to be. And in other master developments where I've run into, that was part of the purchase agreement, is that in this master development, you're going to have to pay this amount of money if you agree to sign this purchase agreement for the land. And so, it was, it was just a done deal. There was no, in this particular situation, I have, I have no authority on this issue, so I'm going to come back again in a month, and then we're going to be into fall, so we probably will not be able to build this year. And I still won't be able to solve this. If they just want to tell me what the fee is, that would be an easier thing to do and what it includes.
It won't be that hard to work it out then, would it?
No.
So...
Can we just give you the figure and say, make the motion, we'll agree to it if you agree to pay 69-60 a year?
I don't, is that in the authority of the council to tell me the fee?
Well, they have the discretion to decide whether this is an appropriate, meets the conditions of the conditional use permit. I think your purchase, what access your facility has to the common space is a factor in deciding what kind of fees you would pay. I think it behooves your organization, whether you have the authority or someone else in the organization has the authority, to come to some agreement with this association regarding this fee issue and bring it back to the council. I don't think it's enough to say, I don't have the authority. Someone in your organization must have the authority to negotiate with this group.
Well, I have, I've been asking to negotiate it from the planning commission. I have the authority as the owner of the property. I haven't been able to get it from, in the planning commission, this was brought up for the first time then, and I, I was told in the meeting that you don't have the authority to dictate to that council.
To what council?
To the, no, to the master association what the fee you're going to pay. They will tell you what that is.
Have they told you yet?
No.
Okay.
So, that's, that was my interest is I don't have the authority to tell this master, nor does Hans Hagen at this point to tell them what the fee should be. So, I can negotiate the fee.
And they're not coming to the table, is that what you're saying?
That's, in the planning commission meeting, that's what was said, is that she hasn't, she doesn't have the authority to dictate to them what the fee will be. They, they will need to come to her. And I said, I am completely open to being, signing whatever agreement you want me to sign as part of the association and paying the fees as you determine they need to be to the association.
What's your comment on that, Mr. O'Connell?
Let's just assume that she's not going to buy this and it remains just what it is, 24 townhomes to eventually be sold. When they're sold, the fee will be right at this moment, $290 a year. She's buying all 24 of them, so what's going to change in the fee?
Well, nothing's going to change, but...
The access to the facilities, the driveways and all that is already there, that's staying the same. None of that's going to change.
No, what I hear her saying is nobody has contacted her with that information so that they can refer an answer to you.
Well, in reply to that, sir, we, like I said, Hans Hagan is the seller. Hans Hagan is also, right at this moment, controlling the overall association just because of numbers. So, have Hans Hagan tell her how much it is. If they tell all the other buyers when they lock in the sales office, they tell them how much it is, and this is what you agreed to. Have Hans Hagan write it down in the purchase agreement that this is what the dues are.
Is that what you're waiting for?
I would have an amendment to your purchase. I mean, this is really a private issue that two private parties should be working out and just solving it and bringing it back to the council. We can't figure all this stuff out because there's documentation that doesn't concern the city, but it's an issue that you guys need to figure out and come back.
And that's, that's the position we took in the planning commission.
But one of the, what the party is, Hans Hagan, he's also the seller. Hans Hagan owns that land and is going to sell it to them, and he is also, and he has his own association.
Well, it sounds like the three of you need to get together.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, this council's going to meet again in two weeks. I move that we postpone this issue to the next meeting, and please come back with these issues worked out. These are private civil issues that the council does not have purview in. And if you don't have them worked out then, I don't know if you'll ever have them worked out, but you should be able to do that in two weeks' time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now, we can...
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Colleen, do you have a contact with Hans Hagen so that the three of you can get together? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to B, final development plans for parking lot expansion and sign for the Grand View Professional Building, four hundred South Second Street, Robert and Marcia Hansen. Denny?
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this issue.
Planning Commission recommends approval of parking lot signage plans for Robert and Marcia Hansen at the Grand View Professional Building, four hundred South Second Street. Sign to be limited eighteen feet in height and a parking lot plan to be revised to address recommendations of city engineer. Also want to clarify one other issue. The sign as proposed is a hundred-and-thirteen square feet. The light industrial district, which is the zoning, underlying zoning, only allows an eighty-square-foot high, or eighty-square-foot an area sign. So by law, we have to limit it to eighty square feet.
I did, oh, questions?
Yeah.
Okay. We have an ordinance in Bantera that says that you've got to be ten feet high and a hundred square feet. I'm wondering if we shouldn't challenge this and make it a ten-foot-high sign? So we start being consistent within the different areas of the city as far as sign height and sign size.
Well, you already have a much more restrictive sign regulatory regulation in the central business district and the light industrial districts to start with. The purpose of the master sign plan, the principal purpose was to reduce the taller signs so we can reduce them down. In that case, there's a potential of ten large signs. Out of the eight lots, in the Bantera, we're able to reduce it down to two, and there could be two additional, maybe. So in that case, the much more restrictive consideration going to forty square feet and six, and it, and those businesses could have signage on the taller signs out on Carmichael Road. But we also, to help identify, to get people in the driveways for those other lots, you know, we went to a very restricted sign area for those lots. And not, I mean, that's, otherwise if, I don't, you know, I don't think we'd be at forty, forty square feet and six feet in height on our standard size. That was just to allow signs to get the people in the driveway when their, when their name is on the big signs on Carmichael Road.
I guess I was looking at that eighteen feet in height and thinking, as you're coming into the city, does it need to be that high? Was my question.
Well, planning commission discussed that some length. They requested or recommended it be reduced by two feet down to eighteen. So also, there is some vision, even though a sign would be set back ten feet from the, from the pathway so you can pull a car up to sidewalk, edge of sidewalk without crossing into it and still be, see north and south. But also by raising it, you'll be all, you're setting in a second car position also, you'd be able to see some of the traffic, some coming particularly to the south or from the south.
I'll move the recommend approval with the sign limited to eighteen feet in height under committee recommendation.
Second.
Danny, just for perspective, what's the sign there now?
Sign is probably eighty square feet and probably twelve feet or so in height. Now, for perspective, if, you know, the sign at the gas station at Cooley and Second, it's twenty feet high and eighty square feet.
Is that, you, the motion for the sign, are we taking this in two, two pieces? Because the parking lot expansion is a part of the whole thing?
I think his motion covered the proposed parking lot.
Yeah.
No, you just said the sign.
I said under the committee recommendation.
Okay.
Please comment, Mr. Bill Warner is here. If there's any specific questions that he's representing Hansen's tonight.
Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to D, request for amendment to Bantera master sign plan, Bantera LLC. Denny?
I'm going to recuse myself on this issue as well.
Committee recommends approval of amendment to the Bantera master sign plan to allow freestanding signs on lots seven, eight, and nine of Bantera for a maximum of a hundred-and-twenty square feet in area and a maximum of eight, fifteen feet in height with the condition that if the hospital does not purchase the property and develop the property, the sign area and height revert back to the forty-square-feet and six-feet maximum standards.
Question for Denny. Denny, your recommendation, staff recommendation, was for a smaller sign that was not so high in the air. We did not get the minutes of your meeting in our packets. Can you tell us briefly the discussion that resulted in the signs being larger and higher?
Well, the request was, and planning commission just didn't support my recommendation. I just felt that with traffic going twenty-five miles on Center Drive, that the significance of having signs much larger in ten feet in height and a hundred-square-feet in area, to me, was not necessary. That's just my opinion.
So, and it didn't say that here, so that was the original request.
Right.
Dave, you're here. Is Dave Robson here? Dave, can I ask a question of you? Hundred-and-twenty square feet of sign, that's a big sign. Why then necessarily?
Compared to a forty-square-feet sign, it's way bigger, yes.
Yeah.
Compared to a two-hundred-and-seventy-square-feet sign, it's pretty small.
Well.
He's got some pictures, sir.
Okay, draw him the pictures.
Here's a fifty-square-foot sign, okay, existing at the hospital. And if you look at that sign, it's twelve feet in height. And if you were going to, this is for the hospital, and they're going to put in a clinic and a whole bunch of different stuff. And if you look at that sign, it's twelve feet in height, and you can't see the bottom foot or half of it because the plantings that they put in, because they put in a very nice planting, are covering up, they're reading on it. And if you're going to give direction to what could be what, a, how big's your building? Be sixty-five thousand per feet potentially, seventy, seventy thousand per feet. We're going to have a lot of different tenants in there. You're going to need to give direction to it. And it's also going to give direction potentially back to the hospital because it's a big campus. So if they didn't need to different, give directions to different locations in the, in the facilities, it wouldn't be necessary. That's why we don't care if it doesn't, if the hospital is here, we don't need it. And they're not going to have a lot on that. We're not changing it for the rest of the development, just seven, eight, and nine.
I understand.
Okay, just making sure everything's clear. And then I want to show you a picture of the existing sign that's two-hundred-and-seventy square feet that's in front of the village.
You want another picture?
Two-hundred-and-seventy square feet. So this will be roughly a third size of this sign. And that's not offensive, that's fifteen feet in height. It's put in a, in a position where it's basically done, it's landscaped around it. You know, nobody's looking to do anything. And their thought at this point is maybe a couple of signs. Ideally, they could have three or four signs, you know, on progress signs on a lot. Their initial thought right now is to, we're not asking for it to decide, I mean, we're going to approve right now. They're going to come back with specific plans when they know exactly one building or two buildings. And then you'll have a chance to approve the whole package at that point. If you want to have the restriction changed to one-twenty and fifteen feet, whether you give them that when they come back, that's a few.
We felt.
What was this size again?
That's two-hundred-and-seventy square feet. And it's fifteen feet tall at the highest point.
We felt that the location and the campus type development, it would be certainly allowable for that.
Well, if they're driving slowly enough, they'll be able to read them.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's also going to be potentially, because we don't know where the area is going to be. Is it on this campus or is it going to be on the other campus? Now you've got emergency vehicles coming in, potentially when people are driving in. There's a lot, there could be commotion and they're trying to figure this out. There are also people coming in from out of town, potentially to visit people in the hospital. They don't know where they're going as well as we, we who live in Hudson. So they need to be able to give direction to people. And again, we've eliminated what ten or so of its pilot signs potentially in this development. So I think we're still doing a very good job with the city.
I'll move to approve, as long as it does revert back to the authorities, basically, committee recommendation.
I'll second that.
Discussion, I think we've already had it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion's carried.
Thank you.
Good explanations. Let's go to Finance Committee. Application of Gary Anderson, DBA, Twin Cities Music for Amusement Device Operators License and Permits for Eighty-Nine Amusement Devices. We sent him a letter because we had to nudge him a little bit to get these permits. And recommendation from Finance is to approve. We're in discussion. Did you want to comment here, Mr. O'Malley, as you did in Finance or not?
Yes, there have been anecdotal comments that I've received concerning these amusement devices and perhaps involvement in illegal gambling. And that perhaps one or more establishments in town may be paying off in bar tabs to encourage people to put the coinage into the machines and possibly win a bar tab. I've just spoken in Finance. We discussed briefly with our interim police chief, Eric Atkinson. If anyone knows of an instance of this happening in any establishment in Hudson, please contact the Hudson Police Department. Because if this is not true, we would like to quash it. If it is true, we'd like to pursue it to its legal end.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Let's go to Public Works Committee. Mr. O'Malley?
We have only one item under consideration for Public Works, and that is a continuation of the road salt storage and distribution with the Village of North Hudson. And we have agreed to, since that's worked out quite well, where we distribute to them road salt that they pay for. They do not buy it from us, they buy their own. We store it for them. Of course, our facility is in the Village of North Hudson, on their property. And we charge them to put it into their loaders. And this is not a huge charge, but there is going to be a five percent increase in two thousand, or, excuse me, this coming season, two thousand seven, two thousand eight. And that conforms exactly with the five percent increase in charges for use of all city equipment. If you were to rent a bucket truck or something, it'd cost you five percent more this year than last. So we're in line with the five percent increase on everything else having to do with Public Works. And I will move that we approve the change.
One second.
Discussion. Wasn't the original intent, because they didn't have their own public works garage?
Right. We have the garage, it's, it resides in the village, but it's our garage. And we store our road salt there.
But they have a new one there.
Well, they're still going to be asking us to do this work for them, and we're going to charge them just enough so that we don't make a profit, but we don't have a loss.
Isn't the storage shed for salt, that's all it's used for, correct?
Yes. Because of the nature of the storage, it can't be used for anything else.
It has to be have certain specifications. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I just make a comment? The price increase should be reflected in the letter of understanding. I didn't, I can talk with Tom about that, but that needs to be in there.
Tom is unfortunately on vacation this week. We were going to discuss that in Public Works, but he wasn't there.
Yeah, it just needs to be in the letter of understanding.
Okay.
So we've got it documented.
We got a response, didn't we? All in favor?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess we got everything on that side. Oh, request for stop sign at Eighth and Oak Street?
Yes, sir. The situation there right now is there's no stop signs on Eighth and Oak. What's happening is there's a stop sign going east and westbound on Oak and Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street. And apparently what's happening, according to the neighbor, neighbors, is that once you get past Seventh Street, they, people drive a lot faster, kind of gun it through the Eighth and Oak intersection. And there's been apparently some near misses from the reports that we've had. The Public Safety Committee recommends approval of a stop sign on East and Westbound Oak Street with the funding for the signs coming from the Public Works sign budget.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
We've, the council has addressed this cross, stop sign at this intersection twice since I've been on the council. I, I guess I would like to see crosswalks there. Because Elm, Oak, Myrtle, and Orange, none of them have stop signs at Eighth Street. Orange has a yield sign, otherwise all the rest of them have nothing. Uncontrolled intersections. I would just, I think if we did anything, we should just put in crosswalks. But like I said, we have previously turned this down.
We had a motion in a second, hadn't we?
Yeah, you already got it.
We already have the motion in a second. Dennis has a point, and we have discussed this sort of issue, and perhaps Eric Atkinson would like to weigh in on this, but I'm sure he's going to say the same thing, because we have discussed it many times, that stop signs are not traffic calming devices. And to say that people are racing through is not the reason to have a stop sign. That would simply just give pedestrians a false sense of security, and the next person to race, race through might hit a pedestrian who thinks he's being protected by a, by a stop sign. Stop signs, as you point out, Paul, there are stop signs at Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Seventh. There is none at Ninth, and there is none at Third. But Fourth, Fifth, Sixth are all accesses to schools north of that location. The Trinity School, the Willow River Elementary. And Ninth and Seventh are thorough streets, but there is no stop sign at Ninth. I think that we would be amiss to put a stop sign here because I do believe we're asking a pedestrian to have a false sense of security in this case. I understand the argument, that, you know, you stop and you stop, and then suddenly you don't have to stop. You don't have to stop at Eighth, you don't have to stop at Ninth either. I don't go quite as well along with the argument that this would affect students walking to school because you can't get to school on Oak Street. You'd have to go over to Fillmore, and that's the way to get up to the school. So I think that, and we have visited this issue on this intersection before and declined in the past, and I think for good reason, and I think we should decline again.
Quite frankly, I made my recommendation based on the fact that the people that live there requested that information. I think since they live there, I would rather feel more comfortable assuming they know better than me what should go on that corner.
Well, you have a point there, Randy, but in, in the years that I've been dealing with this, it's pretty much a given that everybody in town would like a stop sign at their intersection. And which we just simply can't do because then nobody would obey any of them. You're right, I'm sure that you have an accurate picture of it, that they do want a stop sign. But we've had so many groups over the years that all want stop signs at the intersection closest to their house. It's just not doable. So we have to make decisions on this.
Should we take out Seventh through Fourth?
No, because those are accesses to schools.
Well, but, you know, Trinity's on the other side of St. Croix Street, right?
Yeah. Well, I think originally, there was a lot of activity from this Fourth Street school going up to Newton or up to.
Burton.
Yeah. And, and so there's still a lot of traffic there. And I think that was the neighborhood's concern. And they said, well, why don't we have one if we've got one on every street crossing except that one? At least that's what happened when they called me, so.
On the next street over, I don't know if it's Orange or the next one over, there's a yield sign at that corner, not a stop sign.
It would be.
It's Orange.
Is it Orange?
Yeah.
Yeah, in Orange there is.
And really what we're asking people to do is slow down, look both ways. I mean, pretend, act an uncontrolled intersection as if it is a yield sign. That's how we, we want people to behave in, in the residential areas.
Well, we have a motion in a second. Should we act on that particular motion? All in favor of that motion for a stop sign at Eighth Street?
Aye.
Aye.
Raise your hands, I think that. Three and three? I say put it out. Motion is carried. Update on projects. Thank you for a very nice report on updates. Mr. Chuck. Only thing that I'm concerned about is when are you going to start?
Well, the Nine Aldrich project has started.
Yeah, I know that.
I want to make you aware that.
Eleventh, eleventh.
The eleventh one is scheduled to start later this week.
Later this week, okay.
Yep, and, and you should start seeing construction activity for, on Carmichael Road and Crestwood Drive Monday of next week. You'll see signage going up this week, but the actual construction isn't scheduled to start until Monday.
Because we've got to get going if we're going to get this thing done before the end of the year.
We're hoping to start the Eleventh Street project on Wednesday, weather permitting.
Will there be disruption in traffic flow there and blocking that whole intersection off, or just eleventh?
Well, on eleventh, we're just adding a turn lane, so, no, we'll keep, you know, there will be some disruption.
You've got to cut those trees too.
Yep.
When's that going to happen?
Not quite sure what their schedule is for, but if they're going to start on Wednesday, that'll be.
Cut those before you start the project, or what?
Do you, do you recall if that was discussed?
Well, I had it on the trees, that'd be addressed. The one issue that we did have on traffic on Eleventh and Cooley was they may have to push the traffic over into that pedestrian path on the east side of the road. So there has to be care taken in that particular, and there may be some very short-term detours that's required also at there, as they're working on that. But there'll be a minimal, also where, you know, we talked to them last week in regards to this issue that, you know, traffic comes particularly. to this issue, that the traffic comes particularly heavy about three thirty to five o'clock in the afternoon there, and maybe they try to work, adjust their work schedules a little bit to try to accommodate the traffic.
Maybe Acting Chief Atkinson can get somebody out there at that particular time to take care of that. And how long will it take for that particular project, once they start, Chuck?
I imagine that'll take, in three weeks.
Three weeks?
Yeah.
Okay.
In, in regards to Ninth Street and Aldrich, I just wanted to make mention that we did get one complaint on water quality, and I think was some of the millings, it might have shaken the pipes a little bit, and just.
I went through there the other day, and Chief Frye was responding to that particular complaint. So I'm sure that he's already taken care of it, or we'd have heard about it again.
Yeah, but, and it was, it seemed like it was just one house and not the houses adjacent, but just be forewarned that you might receive one or two complaints in that regard.
This was, by the way, on a Sunday, so Mr. Frye was right out there responding.
When do you anticipate that being finished?
That, that is on schedule to be, they're scheduled the end of October. Some of the finishing turf restoration might lead into, to November, first part of November.
I think they're doing a nice job of accommodating that neighborhood, because they're trying to keep it clean. I've been up there a couple of times and responding to some inquiries from the neighbors. But it looks like it's, they're doing a, a good job in keeping that thing going and, and responding to the neighborhood complaints, if there's any.
The city's trying to do what they can to preserve some lilac bushes and what have you, adjacent to the project. You know, other than that, if we want to talk about the Walnut Street Bridge.
Why?
Well, for the TV audience, why don't you read that letter?
Yes, on a.
Everybody got a copy of that?
It's a, it's a letter from Wisconsin Department of Transportation dated September 12th, and from Mr. Bill Zimmer. He's the Northwest Regional Local Program Manager. And it was to the administrator, and it reads, "I was recently made aware of that the segment of Walnut where the project is located is closed to vehicular traffic for the general public. After discussions with WISDOT management and the Federal Highway Administration, it has been determined that this project is not eligible for funding in the federal bridge replacement program. Since this project does not meet the criteria of the program, funds previously approved will be redistributed to other eligible projects. If the city wishes to reevaluate, reevaluate public use of Walnut Street, or you would like to discuss the eligibility of this project in further detail, please contact Will Klein at," and then his number.
Well, we're certainly going to discuss that, because we've already spent about seventy thousand dollars in engineering costs. And we proceeded because they had given us the go-ahead to indicate to us that they were going to proceed with this project. And I think it's more than right that, that we recover these particular costs. And I've instructed Devon to write a letter to the appropriate people, copy the governor, certainly Ron Kind, and anybody who's in the transportation group, and probably copy somebody in the federal government as well. Because I don't think it's fair to say we're going to go ahead with a particular project and then, after we spend all the time in moving those little creatures under the bridge and, and spending seventy thousand in engineering, not to be able to recover that.
Just one minor point, the O'Higgins muscles are still at home, under the bridge.
They haven't been moved yet.
Yeah.
The curse of the O'Higgins muscles.
They don't have, they don't have that little arch on their back.
No, they, they had some problems with visas or something, they couldn't move.
So, Mr. Mayor, from our end, we are, I am looking at exploring some contacts at WISDOT and to make sure that we're on the same page. And anything we learn, we'll pass on to Mr. Willie.
I thought you were just going to say, forget the, the cost of the. But I do think, I do think it's important that we revise the opinions that you had initially on what we could do if we didn't replace the bridge. In other words, what are the weaknesses, what do we have to do to shore that up so that we could continue to use it in its original state here? And I think you did some work on that, didn't you?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Charges for that again.
Yep, and, Mr. Mayor, there's, at the weekly meeting that's held tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, staff level, we will be discussing bridge options. So I would encourage you to attend, as well as Mr. Willie.
But it'd be interesting to find out if we don't get this allocation, what we have to do to sustain that bridge for the next ten years or so, so that we can continue to have emergency vehicles over that without worrying about any collapse. Although I don't think it's in that state at all.
You know, and redecking or whatever the options are, we have explored that. The, I just, I think it's worth re-mentioning that they did, you know, they did approve the funding applications, and there has been WISDOT personnel who've personally visited the site, so, you know, nothing has changed. That bridge has been used the state way it's been used for the last twenty years, whatever.
Any comments, Council?
What precipitated the letter then, from, does anybody know?
Just came.
It, you know, my understanding is that, you know, it was being handled internally by the Department of Transportation, and then recently they've brought on a construction management consultant. And that consultant, when they visited the site rather recently, made that assessment.
This is conjecture on my part, but I think with the collapse of the thirty-five W bridge, they're looking for additional funds that they can use to inspect other bridges that are within the state of Wisconsin. And this will be like a million bucks, but conjecture at this point, but I think it's a fairly reasonable one.
Any other questions?
Any? Thank you very much. Update on health insurance options?
At this point, we're working through issues related to annuitants to see if we can reduce the number of annuitants and therefore allow us to get quotes. So that's where we are. Catherine and I are working with various agencies and organizations to try to make that determination, so.
Well, Al and Paul and you and I have been meeting on this, and as soon as we get that information, we'll call another meeting to see what our procedures are for moving in one direction or another.
Devon, do you have any idea when we can get that information? Because we're really running short of time.
Right, no, I, I'm going to make, I've made another phone call today and want to do tomorrow with the Department of Employee Trust Funds and call and try to find someone else that may come out with questions. The Health Partners has not gotten back to the agent, so.
As soon as he gets that info, he will call another meeting.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments? Let's go to new business, vacating a portion of Arsenal Street, Resolution Number seventeen dash oh-seven. We had a hearing on that earlier. To approve.
Second.
Did we have a first reading on this? When it was introduced?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion's carried. Review bids and consider awarding contract for Lakefront Park Seawell project. And. Since Caruso, I'll ask, ask some comments on the cost too. Go ahead, Chuck.
Bids for the project were open on Thursday, September thirteenth. There were three bidders. The low bidder was Pember Companies, followed by Madison Contractors and Environmental Landscape Management. The base bid was two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars. And also, in the bid package, there was one alternate, and that was to remove the paved trails from this project scope. So it's, at this point, bids are approximately forty thousand higher than the estimate.
They're saying from the point of the new wall to the, basically the boat lodge, no trail.
Yep, and that would be the lower and the upper. Because there's, the, the current project scope has, you know, a pedestrian trail along the water, as well as an upper trail for pedestrian and bicycles.
You want to run that by me one more time? Alternate bid number one, minus forty thousand, does that include it or not include it?
That, that would remove the trails. The base bid includes the trails.
Two hundred. Two fifty-seven includes the trail.
Yes, that is correct.
So then if we didn't have the trail, Mattson Contractors would be cheaper?
Yes. There is, there is one issue with their bid though, in regards to that they didn't comply with the, the five percent cap on the mobilization that we discussed previously. And the reason why we didn't, you know, award to Pember on a previous project.
Like to.
Go ahead.
At this time, I'd like to move that we accept Pember bid of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety. When added together with the contingency fees and professional services, it will come to three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And I move that we accept that bid so that we can get moving forward on this project forthwith.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Betty.
I think we need to fund the project before we award it.
Betty, the paperwork you've given us seems to indicate that we have funding for that.
Yeah, we do, but we have to make the. We funded other projects with those funds, and so like, everything I have and read is moving the funding from that project and putting it down to this project. So we had, you know, probably over a year ago, moved some money from the wall on, into the Dyke Road project. Now that we've abandoned the Dyke Road project, at this point, I would suggest that we move those funds back. That's about a hundred and sixty-five thousand that we would put towards this project. And then being that we're still a little bit short, we also moving a hundred thousand from the Prospect excavation into this project, and we're a little bit short. And so the money that we have left over from the Walnut Street project that is no longer is about thirty-four thousand more that I would move into this project, so that we can complete it with the Batumina Path.
So, do I understand this, we had a hundred thousand in Prospect Park to flatten out the earth up there and to prepare that as a park? And now we're moving it to this project?
We have met with the Park Board, they had, originally had been given a hundred and fifty thousand to work the excavation up there with their project. They, they're applying for some grant funds from the DNR, and they are also utilizing, looking at utilizing that as a ballpark, T-ball field for the kids to play. So we have a proposal right now for about thirty-five thousand dollars to fill the hole and excavate that land out, so that we could use it for that purpose at this point. So we don't need the whole hundred and fifty thousand. So it was okay with the parks, as long as we're using it to redo the park down there. They had no problem with moving those hundred thousand dollars into the Lakefront Park at this time, so that we could complete the wall.
All right.
Would you like me to amend my motion to include the movement of funds as you just described?
That would be nice, yes.
I will sew them in.
Is that okay with the segment?
Aye.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, it just seems to me that this time, to spend three hundred and, was it, three hundred and thirty thousand dollars on this is just a huge amount of money we're forced to spend right now. And if, you know, speak to possibly going back to fixing what we've got there and leaving it. And I know that we have the engineer here, and we had some discussion before about whether or not there was putting extra pressure on the outside bike wall, that that would cave in. We never did a study on that, did we?
No, no, no formalized study, but, you know, general, it's common practice to, so you're not putting any influence on the wall as to, you know, to.
I think there was a discussion, Al, also, that unless we complied to the plan that we're discussing today, that we would not get a full warranty from the block suppliers, which would put us in a rather precarious position to do it the other way and have it fail, which may cost twice as much to redo if, if that thing failed. And so in our, in our discussions after that particular fact, we thought that this would be the most sustainable approach. And quite frankly, we've got to do something with that, with that park down there, that's been sitting there for almost a year, and.
But it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars in addition to the other dollars that we've already spent, which was a hundred and sixty for the first run-through?
Right.
So we're talking about almost a half a million dollars on this project? Would that be pretty close to true?
Yeah, pretty close to it.
Yep, because it was a hundred and sixty, I think, the other one. I brought that along from the last time.
Betty, could you correct me if I'm wrong on whether or not the, those funds are needed, they have to stay in the park? They cannot be shuffled around for other business?
Council could do whatever they see fit with those, as long as they use them for capital purchasing. They are bond funds, and they need to be utilized in that way, or note funds in that sense. I think the Park Board has moved forward with the thoughts of that these were park funds to be utilized for park improvement. I would probably suggest that you bring it to Park Board if you're not going to allow that, and if you're going to change it in any way.
Well, you're on the Park Board, what do you say about that?
The Park Board has approved of what Betty has outlined.
Yeah.
They want to see the wall get finished and get it done, and this seems to be the course that we're taking.
Any other discussions? We have a motion in a second. Comments are due right now. If not, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close?
Aye, aye.
Motion's carried. What do we got? Communications, recommendations of the mayor. I just wanted to mention that Walnut Bridge and the action we're going to take here in conjunction with BRA and what they're going to do. Let's get together on notifying the proper people and the proper procedure, okay? Communications items for future agendas?
Mayor, I have a communication.
Yeah.
Mr. Hanson already kind of scooped me on this already, and Betty alluded to the grant that I applied for, for Prospect Park, for five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It's basically, we see preliminary approval from the local DNR office, or regional DNR office. It's just contingent upon, will the funding level they had last year be the same, and will the governor sign off on it? Because anything over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, a request of that size needs to be signed off on, and we believe he will. But as we know, the budget status is up in the air, and assuming, we can't assume anything. But if the levels are, are the same as last year, then, then it looks like we'll get all or most of the money that we requested.
That's great.
So that should help out.
We did get some information from Madison today, indicating, don't worry about a thing, it's not going to be less than two percent, so you can see. Isn't that nice of them?
There you go. And they know this how? Never mind.
Anyone else, any other person? City Attorney? City Administrator? Seth?
Second.
Carried, thank you very much.